All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council. We're at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. It is Monday, February 17th, 2014. Roll call.
Roll call shows all councilors, except for Councilor Levy, present.
The next item is Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Special Orders of the Day and Announcements. We do have item three A, a Certificate of Appreciation.
Certificate of Appreciation recognizing Mr. Todd Clary and Mr. James Hoyt from Beloit Memorial High School for their extra effort to encourage student interest in community affairs and local government.
Mr. Vice President.
Certificate of Appreciation to Todd Clary in recognition of your extra effort to encourage student interest in community affairs and local government, thereby demonstrating the importance of making a difference in their community and promoting a lifelong interest in civic engagement. Presented this 17th day of February 2014.
Thank you.
Certificate of Appreciation to James Hoyt in recognition of your extra effort to encourage student interest in community affairs and local government, thereby demonstrating the importance of making a difference in their community and promoting a lifelong interest in civic engagement. Presented this 17th day of February 2014.
Item three B is the State of the City Report. I'll be delivering that one. I think you'll all be glad to know that I intend to be as brief as reason will allow. Okay. I've titled this, the State of the City Address, as Persistent Vision. It is time again for the City, State of the City Address. As in previous years, the city manager will provide more detailed overview and financial reports later in the year. I will concentrate and provide a high-level overview of policy and philosophy. I do not intend to dwell on things that we, as a city, do not have direct control over, such as our unemployment rate or the education of our workforce, nor do I intend to take credit for a lowered crime rate that we've experienced. That would be just like taking credit for the sun shining or for taking blame for the rain or the snow. Instead, I will focus on what we can do. One of the great hallmarks of the resurgent city of Beloit has been the vision of our leaders and the persistence of those successive leaders in applying that vision to the actions of our governing bodies. The past 12 months, we've been especially filled with choices for the city that between adhering to our shared vision or giving into expediency. We've had to decide whether to grasp for marginal and questionable development or hold to our principles and wait for better uses. We have faced the fear of the unknown and have to reaffirm to ourselves that a resurgent Beloit was worth the risk. Do we look for new ways to nimbly and aggressively position ourselves to take advantage of the best opportunities, or do we retrench? I am pleased to say that we have chosen to stay the course. When a company wanted to place a very marginal business in the former lumberyard on Ford Lane, we held out for a better use. Later, we were rewarded, as the property was sold to a company that intends to build a hotel on the site. The city took the opportunity to protect our water resources with a new well-headed protection ordinance. When Hendricks Development began to move forward with an extensive new development at the Beloit Iron Works, we were able to secure grant funding to support this important redevelopment work. Taking advantage of opportunities like these requires flexibility. After ending our association with MLG in the previous year, the city offered a general brokerage agreement to provide more avenues for opportunities to come our way in the gateway. The purchase of the extra long parcels in the gateway at an advantageous price gives us the additional flexibility to offer companies high-quality sites for their facilities. Finally, when the time came to place our imprint on the I-9039 interchange reconstruction, which is the largest infrastructure project our area will see for the next few decades, we stood on our vision and supported adding a connection from Milwaukee Road to the gateway, setting the stage for growth along this corridor. Unfortunately, some projects, such as the Casino and North Star Radio Isotopes Facility, do seem to be taking longer than we would like. The Phoenix Building, however, should be completed this spring and is already a polished jewel on our crown. There are significant challenges ahead, ongoing. Our budget remains tight, revenue is stagnant, and inflation is adding considerable pressure to our service delivery. Drop in equalized values has driven the tax rate up to produce the same revenue. This presents challenge to business recruitment. We still have a big old building problem in the city. 946 Park Avenue is a thorn in the College Park neighborhood's side, and we will have to find a solution. And the 200 West Grand Avenue Building continues to blight that corner of downtown. But I believe these are problems where persistence and inventiveness will provide solutions to fulfilling our vision for Beloit. Thank you. See, I told you, it wasn't so bad, was it? Okay. Item four is Public Hearings. Item four A is a Resolution Authorizing Conditional Use Permit.
A Resolution Authorizing a Conditional Use Permit to Allow Vehicle Repair Use in a C-3 Community Commercial District for the property located at 1420 Division Street. The Plan Commission Recommended Approval, five to zero.
Mrs. Christensen.
William and Michelle Eggers purchased the building at 1420 Division Street, as well as the vacant lot at 1412 Division Street, and they have, through the assessor's office, hooked those into one site. The property currently has two buildings on site. The plan is to demolish the front building and convert the back building into full-scale repair shop, with the plan for an addition to the south side of the building. Vehicle repair is a conditional use in the C-3 district. Various site renovations have been proposed, including the addition of garage doors to the building, updating the facade, and the creation of a parking lot and landscaping. Site plan review will be done upon the approval of the conditional use permit. We did send this out to the review agents. Planning staff is recommending a condition of approval related to providing a minimum of 20 parking stalls. Engineering has concerns about the development of the site, which relate mostly to stormwater, which will be addressed during site plan review. They did comment that they have no issue with the proposed use. Aligned Energy would like sufficient notice prior to the demolition of the front building so that they can disconnect the gas and electrical facilities. No other comments or concerns were submitted. We did send this out to the neighbors, and we did hear from one neighbor concerning, actually, two neighbors, by the end of, I mean, this, as of the writing of the staff report, there was one, but there were two neighbors who were concerned about stormwater management, which engineering has assured me we will handle during the site plan review process. And we also did have a neighbor who came to the Plan Commission meeting and said he was very supportive of having vehicle repair business in his neighborhood and supported this application. Plan Commission did recommend approval, subject to the conditions which are listed in the resolution, which are that this conditional use permit authorizes vehicle repair within the existing rear building. The vehicle repair may not occur outside of the building. Junk vehicles, as defined in Chapter Seven, shall not be stored outside. Vehicles may not be sold on-site unless the applicant obtains an auto dealer's license from the state of Wisconsin. The applicant shall provide at least 20 parking stalls and shall strip the lot in accordance with Section 8-112 of the zoning ordinance. Prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall submit detailed site and architectural plans for planning staff review and approval. The applicant shall work with Aligned Energy concerning the disconnection of gas and electric prior to demolishing the front building. The front building shall be demolished by August 1st, and then our standard condition about any major changes coming back through this public process and minor changes being able to be approved administratively. And Plan Commission did unanimously recommend approval.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item four A. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item four A, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four A. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item four A. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Lubke, second by DeForest. Councilor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Christensen, the two residents who are concerned about stormwater management, did they have any other concerns? I was glad to see that one resident looked favorably in having the repair shop. Did the other two have any other concerns besides the stormwater management?
No, there's, I mean, that area of the city has drainage issues, and they just wanted to ensure that it was handled during the review phase of the development.
Okay. And you're confident with the recommendations you make during that review process, you'll be able to address those?
Yeah, there's plenty of room on-site.
Okay.
To deal with drainage. So the city engineer has assured me that that should not be a problem.
Okay.
He will have to provide a grading and drainage plan as part of the site plan review, which will be reviewed by the city engineer and the stormwater engineer, so.
Great, great, thank you. And I'm glad that this business owner is planning to invest in the neighborhood here. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. Item four B.
A proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Beloit to change the zoning district classification of the property located at 2508 Milwaukee Road from C-1 Office District to PLI Public Lands and Institutions District. The Plan Commission recommended approval, five to zero.
I'd like to open the public hearing on item four B. Anyone, oh, you need a staff report.
Unless you don't need one.
No, it's fine, go ahead. Anything can become routine, but we should still do it.
The school district recently purchased 2508 Milwaukee Road. You may recall, we went through the comprehensive plan process, but then only, we only brought the zoning application forward for the properties they owned at the time, and then shortly thereafter, they purchased 2508 Milwaukee Road. The proposed use of this is for the new intermediate school, so it'll include, this lot along with the adjacent lots, will include parking lots, athletic fields, the new school, and Plan Commission did recommend approval of this zoning request.
Thank you. Now I'll open the public hearing on item four B. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item four B, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four B. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four B. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item four B, and do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
Moved by Spritzer, second by Lubke. Do we have any questions or comments on suspending the rules? Hearing none, all in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We suspended the rules by a vote of seven to zero. Do we have a motion on the underlying matter?
I'll move on merits.
Moved by DeForest, second by Kincaid. Any questions or comments on the underlying matter? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. Item five is Citizens' Participation. We've come to the point on the agenda for citizens to come forward and speak to the council on items that may come before us in the future. We may not necessarily act on such requests, but we're made to erect people to staff. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. I do have two sheets indicating individuals wish to come forward and speak to us. I have, start with a Dave Alwyn. Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Dave Alwyn, 344 East Russell Road, Janesville, Wisconsin. And I would like to bring up a vote that was taken last week at the city council meeting of striking the sale of alcohol at the MDA tub run. We wrote and prepared a letter and sent it to the city council last Thursday and also to the Beloit Daily News, and I was wondering, is there any questions concerning that letter?
We may address that at the time that the ordinance comes back before us.
So you're going to call me back up when the ordinance comes up, or?
If we need to, yeah. This one, we, that's when we'll deal with the question-answer sessions. Just if you've got anything to add to your letter, then this is, this is the time to do it.
Well, I would like to just ask, I mean, we weren't on the agenda for last week, and we're wondering how, when you guys were talking about cocaine, alcohol at the library, it turned around to eliminate the MDA tub run alcohol consumption at, at our event when it comes to town. It just, I don't understand that.
Well, on a, on a technical basis, anytime the ordinance comes before us, it's the whole ordinance comes before us. And then ordinance may be amended. That's on a technical basis, but that's, that's, we'll, if there's any, we can address that, again, when we, when the ordinance comes back in front of us. So as unfortunate as it may sound for you, anytime an ordinance comes before this body, it's subject to any revision this body chooses, and a motion was made from the floor.
So, so the motion's been made, you guys passed it, so really, you're telling us?
No, sir. An amendment was made for a first reading on the ordinance. We will have a second reading for that same ordinance tonight.
Okay, I'll wait till that comes up, then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tom Barnes.
Tom Barnes, 2734 Riverside Drive, Beloit. I'm speaking on the same issue, on the motion taken last week, and I would like to encourage everyone to reconsider and change that motion to allow it to continue for the MDA tub run at the second reading tonight, and for a number of reasons. I didn't have a copy of Dave's letter, I don't know what the letter said, but I've been involved in the MDA tub run almost since its beginning, almost 20 years, and I know that they, this year, they expect to top the $2 million mark of money raised for the MDA. In the time that I've been involved, there's only been about two accidents that I can remember, and one of them was not involved alcohol, the other one was, and it was, if I remember right, the guy joined the group after we took off, he was not a participant, not a ticket-carrying participant, no. You know, you can't control some of these things, there's big crowds, but I think that the decision to make on canceling MDA from having this event, from allowing alcohol to be sold at their event, is, it was short-sighted, and I think maybe narrow-minded a little bit. If you take a look at all the other events that we have in our community that have, that allowed beer to be drank, a prime one is the, the street dance that we have, which is 1,000 more people attend the street dance, and they drink. And I'm not aware of any problems we've had with that. At the MDA event, not everybody drinks, contrary to the intent of the motion, which said that by allowing this to happen, we're encouraging drinking and driving. By allowing taverns to be open, you're encouraging drinking and driving, because not everybody walks to a tavern. By allowing beer to be sold at the Kruger Golf Course, you're encouraging drinking and driving, because nobody walks to the golf course. So to eliminate this event and say that this event somehow contributes to drinking and driving, and all the other things that you allow don't, would be hypocritical. This is a very good event. There's a lot of very good people involved, a lot of people have donated immense amount of times to raising something for things that they don't personally benefit from. And I think you guys, really, I'd like to ask you personally to reconsider your motion from last week, open this thing back up. This event not only raises money for MDA, this event brings thousands of people to Beloit from all over the country. The people that come to this event, over 1,200 writers in most years, most of them come from outside the city of, the city of Janesville, Beloit, they're from all over the place. We have writers from all over the country that come up to join this event. It's one of the most renowned MDA events in the country. And having those people come and see all the neat things that we've done with Beloit, the beauty of Beloit, I think to encourage them not to come here is a huge mistake, and I'd like to ask you to change your mind and reconsider your vote and add the MDA tub run back to that ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no further sheets, but if someone else would like to come forward and speak under item five, Citizens' Participation, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak under item five. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under Citizens' Participation. Hearing none, I'll close Citizens' Participation, and we'll move on to item six on the agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are to be considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member's so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order business and considered at this point in the agenda. Councilor DeForest, did you wish to have something removed?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Item six E, I'd like to retract that from the Consent Agenda, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any other persons wishing to remove something from the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, the Consent Agenda will consist of items six A through six D and items six F through six H. Do we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve, second.
Moved by Lubke, second by Levy. All in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. Item six E.
A proposed zoning text amendment to create Section 5-202 sub-B sub-11 of the zoning ordinance, Chapter 19 of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Beloit, relating to contractor offices and storage yards in the DH Development Holding District. So referral to the Plan Commission.
This ordinance amendment would just add contractor offices and storage yards as a listed conditional use in the development holding, and Plan Commission will review this on Wednesday. Did you have any questions, or?
Yes, go ahead, sure.
I just wanted to ask before I came back to this body, if you could find out if there's other comparable communities that have this type of zoning, just so we can know what, how that's worked for them, if there have been any problems or issues related to it.
With the development holding or with contractor offices?
With the contractor offices.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Sure.
All right, do we have a motion to approve six E?
Motion to approve.
Moved by DeForest.
Second.
Second by Spritzer. All in favor of approval of six E, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. Item seven, Ordinances, I, seven A.
A proposed ordinance substitute amendment number one to amend Section 15.06 sub-4 sub-B 1 of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Beloit relating to alcohol consumption and possession on streets and other public places.
Okay, second reading. All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by DeForest.
Second.
Second by Spritzer. All right, we have a number of questions and comments. Councilor Lubke.
I, first of all, I'm going to speak as one council, I'm not going to speak for the whole council, but I want to apologize to the MDA people. As I said last week, what we did as a council was cherry-picking. We picked out one organization. We didn't pick on Riverfest or the Snappers or whatever were alcohol served. We picked on the MDA, which was very unfair. The perception was that people come in and just drink or whatever. That was not right, so as one council, I want to apologize to this group, and I'll leave it at that for this time. Thank you.
Councilor Van de Bogart.
Well, I'll take that a step further, and as I recall, Mr. Lubke and I were among the three who voted against the removal of the, of the tub run as an exception. I'd like to move that we reinstate that language and allow it to go forward. I think, I think that it's simply not supported by the facts, it's not supported by the police department in the sense that there was any sort of an issue. Apparently, we had 800 people, there were no traffic violations, there were no alcohol violations, there was nothing except 800 people with discretionary income enough to spend on motorcycles coming to our fine downtown for an hour or two and then leaving. And where is the problem with any of that? It seems to me that we are, on one side, trying to promote Beloit and get people to come here and appreciate our, our improvements, and then we turn around and something like this for whatever personal or political reasons my fellow councilors may have had. It's just, it makes, it's nonsensical to me. This is totally inappropriate. They've done nothing wrong except enjoyed the day and moved on, and they want to come back. I hope they want to come back. I hope we haven't poisoned the well. So I would move that we reinstate that language that we took out.
Do you move a new, new amendment, a new substitute amendment to reinstate the tub run to the?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for that amendment. Do we, Councilor DeForest, do you wish to discuss the, discuss this amendment?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm choosing to read my comments and submit a copy to the Daily News so I can be assured my comments will be quoted correctly. First, I would like to emphasize that if an individual were to watch the last city council meeting, which they can, it's archived online, they will clearly see that I went out of my way to make sure the organizers of the MDA tub run would have an opportunity to weigh in on the decision before moving forward, to permanently strike its inclusion on the list of exceptions. I approve the amendment, I propose the amendment and ask the item be laid over to this meeting, specifically so the organizers would have the opportunity to comment. I am the one, in fact, that implored my colleagues to not suspend the rules and allow the ordinance to have a second reading in order to ensure the organizers would have the opportunity to share their concerns. The vote taken at our last meeting obviously was not the final vote. My comment about the event not taking place last year was relative to our city of Beloit ordinance and the event not taking place last year in the city of Beloit, and therefore not requiring inclusion as an annual event in our city. I would also like to comment that in no way does my desire to not allow the sale of alcohol in the streets of downtown Beloit for this event reflect my opinions about bikers or about drinking alcohol. I am not anti-biker, I do not hold stereotypes about bikers or make assumptions about how much or how little alcohol may or may not be consumed by any one particular biker or group of bikers. I would object to the inclusion of this activity just as strongly if it was a car tub run. At the last meeting, one of my colleagues stated that it was not fair to assume that anyone would be drinking alcohol at this event. Then why does it need to be sold? My opinion about this is not influenced by whether or not there were documented problems before. I am concerned about the message that is sent to our residents, and especially our youth, where we have worked very hard to convey to them that drinking and driving should not mix. In two different emails that I received, participants in the event stated they are only in Beloit for a short period of time before getting back on their bikes and driving to their next destination. This is exactly my concern. One specific responsibility given to this body is oversight of the sale of alcohol in our city. This is not meddling, it's a charge that we have been given, and I take that charge very seriously. There's a reason why we need to vote on making this exception, because it's contrary to our existing ordinances, which are in place for a reason. I am very grateful, truly, for the many individuals who desire to support the MDA. I would hope that they would decide that they could have fun and that the MDA is an organization worth supporting, whether beer is served in the streets or not. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments on this, on this amendment? Councilor Spritzer.
I, I wanted to, to add my apology to the tub run folks for how this was handled at our last meeting. I think I voted the way I did based on how I felt on the merits of it, not through any concern that, of any behavior that, that you all are taking part in that, that is problematic, but as was just mentioned regarding the perception, the message that is sent to people who are watching and to our youth. I had a problem with the way that this came up at our last meeting without notice, I don't think that's the way we should do business. I also supported laying it over to this meeting to give you a chance to come in and weigh in, but I think that we could have handled it differently and brought it up separately rather than as part of an issue that really related to the library. And on that note, I also want to apologize to the people from the library who worked hard to get that done, and I think we're expecting a vote at our last meeting on just that issue. So I, I agree that I want to, I don't want to be associated with any comments that suggest that there have been any issues with the tub run in Beloit in terms of drinking and driving or, or accidents related to that. I purely voted based on the perception and the message, and, and I do hope that the tub run would consider coming to Beloit as part of its rotation and having a good time without alcohol being served. I think that is definitely possible to do, and I absolutely support the mission of the tub run, I think it's a great event, I'm glad that it has come to Beloit. I just, just wanted to make that comment to explain my vote, and again, that I think the way it was handled procedurally was unfortunate.
Councilor Levy.
I just have a question of the chief. I think we asked for you to be prepared to just ask a couple of questions at this meeting. From the police standpoint, what are your, what is your take on this? Are the police in favor of it? Is it easy to patrol? Do you see problems with this event? Do you see problems with this event? Any concerns?
The police are in favor of it. The police are always nervous when there's a large group of people with what we feel are inadequate resources for that number of, of persons. But in this case, I went back and checked our notes and spoke with the sergeant who was involved with the activity, and there were, he estimated there were approximately eight hundred motorcyclists that were in town for less than two hours, and everything went very well. There were no crashes, no alcohol-related events, no disorderly conduct arrests, nothing of the, nothing of the kind, if anybody's worried about that. Our concern is with coverage of intersect, large intersections with that many bikers going through them who generally have to go through the, the lights to stay together, but the group provides support for that also, which is, which is wonderful. Those are our issues, but we're, we're supportive of the group coming back.
Okay. Proceededly, Mr. President, I do have a question.
Sure.
Of the gentleman that spoke from the group, if that's okay.
You want to talk to, to, ask him a question?
Dave, yeah, just a quick question.
Dave Allen?
Dave Allen, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I, I understand, you know, what the importance of the event. My question is, so if we were to say that we didn't want any alcohol being served, would that really, would that stop you guys totally from coming? And is that, I mean, is that a huge deal? I mean, if you say that a lot of people don't participate in the drinking part, if we say we don't, we would love to have you here, but we're not, we would just want to have alcohol available, is that enough to say we're not coming?
You're asking, do we need alcohol to make the event a success in Beloit?
Yes.
That's what you're asking? I don't think we do, but why should we be singled out not to have alcohol? I mean, if you take alcohol from us, I'm assuming you're going to do it with the Snappers?
I'm just simply asking. It was just a question.
Yes, okay.
Not simply, kind of started a large debate. I'm just simply asking a question. That's all I'm doing, is asking a question.
Yes, we probably could.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kincaid.
I supported continuing this, the, the motion and the ordinance to this today because I felt it would be useful to, to hear more about it. And I think we have learned, from my standpoint, the, the consequences or no consequences of alcohol, and we've certainly heard that the, what, what an asset the, the event is to the city. So I'm, I'm pleased that we, we've, for all the angst that it may have caused, I'm pleased that we've had a chance to air it out tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Again, in support of my motion to reinstate it, if you would, it seems to me that this council is faced, as our councils are across the state and country, constantly with the issue of authorizing sale from convenience stores. Casey's will be coming up shortly, from grocery stores coming up shortly. And this is an opportunity, if you turn it around, it's somewhat hypocritical to single out this particular event, but this is an opportunity to show young people how you can consume this beverage or this product safely and within bounds. I mean, you go back to Nancy Reagan, just say no. Well, that's part of it, but the other part is people are going to do this, and don't you want to show young people how to do this intelligently and safely? And eight hundred bicyc, or not bicycle riders, motorcycle riders coming to town, doing it intelligently, safely, with no events, is a pretty good instructional way to do this. It's not a bad way to do this. It's not a signal to our kids to go out and do this. It's a signal, do it well and safely. So it's, it's, it's a two-edged sword here, folks. You, you can't say no to these folks and yes to everybody else. That same argument about drinking and driving.
Model behavior. All right. Do we have any other questions or comments on the proposed amendment before we call the amendment? Counselor Levy.
Not so much a question, but a statement to my colleague, Councilman Vanda Bogart. When we talk about singling out individuals or groups, we, in essence, we do that to some degree now, and I know that I've been on the tail end of saying, why are we showing differences in grocery stores and convenience stores? So we do that when we sit down here time after time and a convenience store comes forward and they may want a liquor license or something, and we say absolutely not. But then a grocery store could come in the same vicinity and we say absolutely. So we already are doing this. So I don't want anyone to think that this is something that we have just started doing. And I don't think personally that it's a targeting, we, we keep saying that, okay, well, if you take it away from this individual group, are we going to take away from all the groups? So we could, we could say that with everything that we do. If we take away from convenience stores, are we going to take it away from all the grocery stores? So as you said, it's a two-edged sword, but I just wanted to put that statement on the table.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Forrest.
Thank you. I'd like to add to the statement and make sure that everyone knows, this is certainly not the first time I voted no. Want to make sure that's for the record. I'm certainly not singling you out. I want to, I want to make sure that you know that. I take the sale of alcohol very seriously, and I want to make sure that, that any perception that I was stereotyping, that I'm anti-motorcycles, is not the case here. This is strictly about my concerns about the sale of alcohol and its perception for our community. And I have voted no on many occasions related to the sale of alcohol in our city for different groups and on different occasions. So I want to make sure that you know that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do we have any other questions or comments on this amendment? I'll call forth on the amendment.
Vandy Bogart's amendment.
Yes, the amendment to reinstate the language for the tub run. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was Counselor Vanda Bogart, Counselor Lukey, myself, and Counselor Kincaid. So that amendment passes for, or it has four votes. All those against?
Nay.
That would be three against. So the amendment to reinstate the language is passed by a vote of four to three. Do we have a motion on the underlying ordinance? Or the amended, amended ordinance, I should say. Moved by Lukey.
Second.
Second by Vanda Bogart. Do we have any further questions or comments? All right then, I'll call the matter. All in favor of this amended ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
So the, the nay was just, just you? Okay, so passes by a vote of six to one. All right. Item eight is, are the appointments. Hi, the undersigned Charles M. Haynes, duly elected president of the Beloit City Council. Under the confirmation by the Beloit City Council, thus hereby appoint the following citizen members to the vacancies and terms indicated below, and set appointments being pursuant to the nominations made by and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at the regular meeting held by February tenth, twenty fourteen. Appointments are for, to the Board of Review, Craig T. Daskem at twenty-two oh six Winchester Drive to an alternate position for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty fourteen, and to the Equal Opportunities Commission, Mary Weaver, two-twenty-two Caldwell, replacing Carolyn N. Lawrence for a term ending thirty June, twenty sixteen. Do we have a motion to approve on the appointments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Levy, second by Spritzer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. I'd like to announce the following vacancies. The Appointment Review Committee has two vacancies for residents. The Board of Appeals has two vacancies alternate for residents. The Board of Ethics has one vacancy for former city council, three vacancies for residents. Board of Review is one vacancy alternate for resident. Community Development Authority has two vacancies for residents. Municipal Golf Committee has one vacancy for youth, one vacancy for resident. The Parks and Recreation Conservation Advisory Commission has one vacancy for resident. The Plan Commission has one vacancy for resident. And the Traffic Review Committee has two vacancy for residents. If you'd like to serve your community in these important roles, please contact the Clerk's Office or the City Manager's Office. All right. Item nine is Counselors' Activities, Upcoming Events. Counselor DeForest, let you get started.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would, I want to make sure that I congratulate the town of Beloit. They have obtained the paramedic level of service for their responders, and I'm thrilled about that because we use so much mutual aid. Oftentimes, you might find that a first responder to your door is coming from the town of Beloit, and so I'm thrilled that they have achieved that level of service and appreciate how they have supported their employees to obtain that. So now in the city of Beloit and the town of Beloit, we have paramedic level of service. I also would like to share in, in an olive branch of continued collaboration of communities working together. I really appreciated, I, I had a lengthy conversation with Mark Fretag, who is the new Janesville City Manager, I think less than two months now. He joined Janesville as their city manager, and he is excited about, hopefully to be coming soon, once the weather breaks, a joint city of Beloit, city of Janesville, city council meeting to follow up with the one that we had a while back, and so I really enjoyed speaking with him. And then finally, I just wanted to make sure that I thanked again James Hawley and Todd Clary, who are here, for their wonderful efforts in encouraging students to come and observe government meetings and to take part in their local government. Excited to continue to see them and remind them that there are spots in some of our committees for their voices to be heard. And then on a last note, I know we're all very fed up and frustrated with the snow, and it, it becomes even more poignant for me when I think about our crew, our employees that are out there, who again will not be going home tonight. Every time you have to go out there and shovel your sidewalk, they have to go out there and plow our streets. And I just wanted to personally thank them. This has been a very hard winter for them. These are incredibly dedicated individuals who are out all night long plowing our streets and are not getting home to their families. So I just wanted to thank them for their fantastic service this winter season. Thank you.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would point out that if you have a neighbor who has trouble shoveling their snow, get out there and help them. I know it's difficult. I've done way too much of it, but there's lots of us in the community, and lots of people in the community who might need a little bit of help, and either shovel them out, or if you've got a snow blower, run your snow blower up and down the street once on the sidewalk and help somebody out. The other thing I would point out that's going on, of course, is the Beloit International Film Festival. I had the opportunity to go to three films over the weekend, and I'm going to get to volunteer this coming Thursday at one of them. So they're going on, and check them out. They're wonderful entertainment, and it's supporting a very, very good cause. So I'd encourage folks to do that. Thank you.
Counselor Kincaid.
After hearing of our Public Works Department, working all night and all day, I hesitate to say I have been enjoying cross-country skiing, but I'm going to say it anyway. And I will say that the volunteer or the public works person who grooms the, the trail is, is to be honored, a giant among men, or women, whichever. Does he do it? I didn't realize that.
Lee Brooker.
Lee Brooker, oh, okay. All right. I, I do have one other thing that I think was important. Yesterday, I joined a large number of women and men at the annual League of Women Voters event. It was, of all of Rock County showed up, and it was the birthday of Susan B. Anthony, which I took great pleasure in learning a great deal about that important person in our history. So it's, the guys, they're, you know, they're, most women would like to join it, but I want to encourage this group to consider it, joining it, and take advantage of the, the great things that you'll learn about nonpartisan politics. I have a, I do have application forms.
Okay. I may get my hands on that. Counselor Lukey.
I was honored a week or so ago to represent the council. I think Counselor DeForest was there, and I don't know if, were you there, Counselor, at Hackett School?
Yeah.
I saw two other counselors there, but that was quite an impressive sight on that formerly was beginning to be a bladed corner. It's a fantastic school, as are all the schools now. BIF, as Counselor Vandy Bogart said, it's fantastic this year. All the venues I've been to have been packed and fun. I'm seeing people from Janesville and Rockford. This is truly Beloit's answer to Sundance. I would encourage you, if you can, there are some Wisconsin Shorts, because it's two weekends this year, you can get to them this coming weekend. There's Wisconsin Shorts one and two. I went to both of them, and these are all directors and producers from the, mostly the Milwaukee area, but some fantastic films. I think Shorts, number one, there are seven different, some are two minutes long, some are twelve minutes. They're, they're great, and they're, and then the producers and directors come up afterwards and answer questions. So get out this weekend and enjoy. It's fantastic for Beloit. Downtown's alive, and I think the weather's going to be okay. If anybody can pull some strings there. And talking about the weather, I think there's a church in the west side that has a sign-up that says, for all those of you who are praying for snow, please stop. That's all I have.
Counselor Spritzer.
I've also been busy. I had a chance to attend the Susan B. Anthony birthday event as well and learned more about the history of her life and the women's suffrage movement. It was a fantastic event put on by both the Beloit and Janesville League, so great to see that cooperation in Rock County, and the league does great work. Of course, wanted to mention BIF as well. I've got several films on my calendar to get to the rest of the week and next weekend, and some of the great food specials at our downtown restaurants that are associated with BIF, so be sure to check that out. I haven't been out skiing in the past week, but I did go snowshoeing for the first time. The Welty Center and our Rock County Parks Department put on a candlelight snowshoe last Friday out at Beckman Mill, and it was a great event, very well attended, so it was a great opportunity to get out and enjoy the snow, although I wish we didn't have more today. And this Wednesday, I will be joining the Beloit delegation with the City Manager and Counselor Vanda Bogart to go up to Madison for the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Lobbying Day to talk to our representatives about some of the issues affecting municipalities, and specifically the city of Beloit.
Counselor Levy.
This council is just way too healthy for me. You're biking, you're skiing, you're snowshooting. Just amazing. I'm proud of all of you. Keep up the good work. So I am.
Oh, I think, the only thing I'd like to add is, Sheila mentioned that while we're all, you know, shoveling and snowblowing our own things and that the city crews are out plowing, they still have to, when they're done, they have, still have to go home and shovel their own locks too. So do, do remember that. And remember to go ahead and shovel your own, because, well, I've got three calls today because people aren't shoveling their locks. I guess, I know we're all tired of it, but it really does still have to be done. I know I have four hundred feet of sidewalk that I have to shovel myself, so, anyway, that's all I'll leave. And item ten, it's the City Manager's presentation. Item ten A.
It's the Annual Landmarks Commission Report for 2013.
Good evening, members of the council and guests. I'll make this presentation painless and pleasurable. Painless for me and pleasurable for you. The Beloit Landmarks Commission Annual Report, Activities for 2013. The intent, the, the report is provided in accordance with section thirty-two point oh five-ten of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, which requires the Landmarks Commission to report the activities to the city council on a yearly basis. Section thirty-two oh six-two of the Historic Preservation Ordinance states, any alteration of designated landmarks landmarks, landmark sites, or structures within the historic district in the city shall first require a certificate of appropriateness from now on will be called COA." The property in this slide was our most recent COA that was approved for the College Park District, four rails and banisters on the front porch. In addition to this property, the Landmarks Commission currently monitors 112 properties in the Bluff Street District, 173 properties in the College Park District, four properties in the Merrill Street District, 41 individual listed landmarks. The commission presently consists of a group of wonderful people, myself, Alex Blazer, the chairman, vice-chair Ruth Vader, Donna Johnson, Ellen Joyce, Terry Kay, Rick McGrath, Steve Valmer, and of course, our distinguished council member, Charles Haynes. Haynes. Haynes.
That's right.
The Landmarks, the Landmarks Commission met 11 times in 2013 and reviewed certificates of appropriateness applications. The certificates of appropriateness, COA applications, there were 45 COA applications were processed in 2013, 27 of which were approved by the staff. COAs consisted of: one, addition or new construction, two chimneys and tuck-pointing, eight fences and retaining walls, four garage repairs and construction, four gutters, soffits, fascia, six handrails and porches, seven ramp sidewalks, steps, pavements, nine roof repairs or replacements, three signs, miscellaneous items, five siding, 10 windows and doors. The additional activities of the commission were supported historic preservation presentations and tours during Beloit Heritage Days in September 2013, created new welcome packets for new owners of historic properties, previously submitted historic district signed packages moved forward with possible installation in 2014. At this time, I would like to express my gratitude to Stephanie Hummel for putting this program together, and the members of the council for allowing me to present it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item, do you want to go ahead and make a comment?
Okay, sure, sure. Thank you and the commissioners for savings, the saving of Beloit's past. It's important, and it really hurts a lot of us when old buildings are taken down that don't need to be taken down, and it's so neat to see them preserved, and so thank you for all your, the hard work and dedication. Appreciate it.
Councilor Vandy Bogart.
That's essentially what I wanted to add also, Mr. Baldwin, was thank you and the commissioners for meeting 11 times in the year. Many of our commissions and groups have trouble, one, getting a quorum, and two, meeting on a regular basis, and you folks have done it 11 times, so that's quite a dedication, and thank you for your service.
I'd like to point out that, interesting fact is that the Landmarks Commission is at full strength, and very few of our commissions can actually say that, which speaks to the dedication of Beloit's residents to their historic preservation. All right, okay then, we'll move on to 11A.
A resolution approving the Clubhouse Food and Beverage Operating Agreement for the Kruger Haskell Municipal Golf Course.
Mr. Ramsey.
Good evening. It's a pleasure tonight to present to you the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the operating agreement on behalf of the city with DND Buck LLC as concession operators of the Kruger Haskell Municipal Golf Course. This agreement will allow for a concessionaire to operate the food and beverage services at Kruger Haskell Municipal Golf Course for a minimum of three years, with an option for a two-year extension. The city publicly announced a request for proposals to operate the golf course concessions in local and regional newspapers and directly mailed an RFP to over 40 businesses in Beloit and the State Line area in October and November of 2013, and unfortunately received no responses. In January, we received interest from DND Buck Holtz, aka DND Buck LLC, who are actually here tonight as well, current owners and operators of Diamond Lanes on Cranston Road in Beloit, and found their business to be good in standing with the city of Beloit with no citations or outstanding payments and are highly recommended by the staff. The operator will be responsible for all direct operating costs of food supplies, personnel, and cleaning of the facility. The operator will be required to meet all state and local applicable laws as related to acquiring and operating food service license, a liquor license, and compliance of all requirements of the Rock County Health Code, as well as all other requirements as referenced in this agreement, including appropriate insurances. The operator is required to be operational at the same time as the golf course is operational, and provide food and beverage services for all golf playdays events and other special events as requested. Therefore, the Parks and Leisure Services staff recommends accepting the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the operating agreement on behalf of the city of Beloit and DND LLC as concession operators of the Kruger Haskell Municipal Golf Course. Any questions?
Thank you. After we get it on the table to...
I'll second.
Move by Levy, second by DeForest. Okay, councillor Kincaid.
Looks like you've covered just about everything, I appreciate it. I do have a question. When the spaces are rented to organizations or individuals for a party, do the folks who run the facility thrive on that? Do they get to get rent for the space, or how does that work out?
That is their option, of course. The space is theirs to utilize. Golfing comes first, of course, all the operations for the golf course. At times where we are not utilizing the space, that is an option that is available for them as outlined within the agreement as well, yes.
Okay. The other question I have is that, I was looking at the insurance limits, and in the event that a million dollars isn't sufficient, would the city stand behind that? Any further claims? How would that work out, Mr. Casper?
Well, obviously, the city does have a policy of liability insurance with SIBMC, with some rather generous limits, including reinsurance, so I think there'd be more than adequate coverage should the city be brought into some litigation, or there'd be some question on city's liability. The city also enjoys some statutory immunities that a private party might not fully enjoy, although recreational immunity can be available to anyone, but the city has additional immunities beyond that, so I, we felt the insurance language was adequate.
My concern is, of course, that when there's a suit, one goes towards the money, and in this case, would probably be the city, and we are confident we're sufficiently covered.
Correct.
Good, thank you.
Councillor DeForest.
Thank you. I'm excited that these business leaders have stepped forward and stepped up to do this. I really appreciate your willingness, and I'm excited about it. And I was combing through the agreement, I was glad to see your commitment to provide exceptional cart service out on the course during prime days. That was an issue that we had before, and we heard about it from the Golf Course Advisory Council, so thank you for stepping up to meet those demands and those needs, and wishing you great success. I'll be out there to get a bite to eat sometime, not that I'm going to necessarily do very good at playing golf, but I'll be out there to eat.
All right. Councillor Lubke.
Brian, what is the average monthly cost in utilities?
You know, I probably couldn't respond to that adequately at this point in time. It varies from month to month, of course, the same of all of our utilities do. However, I could check on that and perhaps get back to...
The city pays the utilities, though.
Yes, but yes, the city does pay the utilities, all those costs are ours, because obviously we're operating our point of sales there for our golf course, and we have our pro shop there, we have locker rooms and restrooms available, so it's a shared facility, and I think by us having, managing the cost of the utilities versus trying to split that makes it very advantageous for the franchisor.
All the coolers, all the refrigeration system, all the stoves, they're owned by the city of Beloit?
Yes, they have the option to bring in anything they would feel that they would like to. Our previous provider did that, they had their own freezers, as well as the one that we did provide. There is an extensive list in one of the appendices that addresses all the items that are there that we currently provide and own.
It's pretty extensive stuff there that's supplied by the city, then, in other words?
Yes, in fact, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Vandy Bogart.
I certainly intend to vote for the motion, and I would wish the Buckhols all success and a good season, early season, late fall, early spring, late fall, not a lot of snow, get some playdays, but be careful with too much cart service and drinking and driving out there, it's, I couldn't help but say that.
All right, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Councillor Vandy Bogart made me think, years ago, the clubhouse is open in the wintertime for cross-country skiing. They put barricades around the greens, and we had quite the cross-country skiing out there, and they served hot chocolate and muffins and things like that, so that might, this would have been a fantastic winter for it. So just something to think about. Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have any other? All right, any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion to approve. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes 7-0, we'll move briskly...
Thank you very much.
Move briskly on to 11B.
A resolution approving the arbitration award to the International Association of Firefighters Local Union 583, amending the 2014 budget and authorizing an appropriation.
This is the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have provided, both in the resolution document itself and the staff reports attached to that, a more detailed analysis of the long history of this particular grievance, so if residents are interested in that, they may want to look that up online under the agenda for this particular meeting. I'm just going to make a few brief comments to set some perspective. Councilors are obviously aware, this incident came out of one of the renegotiated contracts that the city did with all of its unionized employees, which at the time was most of the workforce. We were responding to the first round of cuts in city funding that we received from the state back in 2009 for the 10 and 11 budget cycles. We went back to all of our employees, we asked them to postpone a 2.5% raise that was scheduled to go into effect on January 1, 2010, move that back to the end of the budget cycle. All the unions concurred and agreed, and we moved that raise back. We entered into new agreements with all of them. The terms and conditions varied a little bit from bargaining unit to bargaining unit, but essentially, they were the same basic package. And I do want to, again, emphasize and thank all of the bargaining units and the employees, because those renegotiated wage packages were critical to balancing those two calendar year budgets, 10 and 11, without any significant budget cuts, personnel reductions, facility closures, or anything else that impacted the public. Again, I want to thank the employees for participating. The deal we did with the firefighters local 583 included a site letter where we made certain commitments to maintain staffing levels throughout the two-year period of time. While essentially, we did that, we did have a vacancy in late 2010. The fire department, working with the human resources department, initiated a normal recruitment process. They did change over to the electronic applications as part of that particular recruitment effort, which was a new initiative that the HR department was implementing as part of the e-government initiative. It's standard now citywide, but it was new. We found out in the middle of the process, not all of the detail that the fire department likes to receive on candidates was included. They had to go back and redo information. There were some other administrative problems that occurred along the chart of it, as the timeline for filling this single vacancy droned on. And by the time we got these bugs worked out and the recruitment was nearing its completion, we were pushing into the fall of 2011. By then, the 2012 budget had been prepared, and we were facing an even bigger round of revenue reductions, and that was the year, councillors will recall, where we ended up eliminating 20-plus positions all across the organization. Five of those were firefighters, and the position we were attempting to fill was one of the five that was being eliminated. At the time, it sounded like good management and basic common sense that we wouldn't hire somebody and lay them off 90 days later. As you might imagine, the union took exception to that, because we had made a commitment that we would retain 57 bargaining unit personnel. So they filed a grievance, this went through the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission. They won on the merits on the initial round, although the arbitrator had commented that no harm was done. Certainly, there was nothing malicious here. The city in no way attempted to undermine the union's security, in no way attempted to do any harm to any of our employees, to not withhold salary benefits or anything else the employees were due. We simply didn't fill the vacancy that was slated for elimination. When we went back for the penalty phase, apparently, the arbitrator's decision had changed substantially, and the arbitrator awarded the union what amounted to $300,000 in back pay, a new 2.5% salary increase that had not been previously negotiated through the collective bargaining process, which was clearly violation of the collective bargaining agreement. And that raise alone would have cost the city over a million dollars during the first decade. So it was quite an extraordinary amount of money for relatively minor violation of language in the site letter. We, I think, all agreed at that time that we couldn't accept that, that we had to appeal that and have the circuit court review that decision. And we did, and we got relief. The circuit court agreed with the union that the city had violated the site letter by not filling the position. However, they felt that the penalty phase of the arbitrator's award was inappropriate, and it was set aside. The judge then came back and still imposed what I think is an onerous penalty on the city for this violation, basically requiring us to make the 2.5% back pay to the firefighters for both calendar years 10 and 11. And that amount of money comes to about $230,000, spread across to over 60-plus employees, and it will come split out of the general fund and out of the city's ambulance fund. We've looked at this matter from a number of different perspectives. We did get substantial relief, $230,000 is a lot better than 1.3 million. We don't feel there's any value in continuing to appeal this. In fact, we would be taking some risk by appealing it, that the original award might be reinstated, and the city would be on the hook for 1.3 million dollars. So our recommendation is to go ahead and resolve the agreements at this point. This particular resolution does that. It also creates a supplemental appropriation out of fund balance. Obviously, we don't have this kind of money sitting around at our general fund, so we will need the supplemental appropriation. will need the supplemental appropriation. If council approves the resolution tonight, the payment to the firefighters will be made as quickly as we can process this special payroll, and that will conclude this matter, which has been going on now for some two years. So whip it, Mr. President. If there are any more specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move of 11B, the second.
Move by Vanda Bogart, second by Lubke. I'll start off by saying I'm glad that we're getting ready to put this behind us. It's been a long haul with this for no more than it, that it really was. Counselor Vanda Bogart.
I just wanted to make the motion. That was-
Okay, that's all. Okay. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I would like to make a comment about this resolution. The side agreement specifically stated that the city promised to maintain positions and fill all vacancies, and I would like it noted for the record that the decision to violate the conditions of the side agreement by canceling the selection process for filling a vacancy was never brought before this body for review or discussion. I would like to further note that as a result of this decision and subsequent arbitration award over the course of the last two years, the cost to the city is over a quarter of a million dollars, not including unspecified legal fees. Furthermore, in my opinion, a level of trust has been eroded between city administration and our employees. As a result, I would implore administration that in the future, a decision of this magnitude be brought before this body, as it should have been. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. President, may I respond briefly?
Yes, you may.
The matter of hiring and firing employees is generally handled by the city manager. I was the one that ultimately canceled the recruitment process, but not until October of 2011, three months before the new fiscal year was to begin. All five positions were eliminated. Obviously, at the time, we did not feel we were violating the side letter. We had maintained manning and manning assignments and crew assignments throughout the year. Being down one position in the public safety departments is not unusual. That's very routine. Often, we're down two or three positions at a time while we're waiting, going through the selection process. This was routine, a routine business matter. We responded to it in a commonsensical way. There was nothing malicious about it. We weren't intending to in any way embarrass or undermine the union's position, and we did discuss it at one meeting with the union. Obviously, we didn't have a meeting of the minds. They took it very seriously. As you recall, there was also a lot of tension at that time related to these cutbacks, some other changes that were taking place in the department because of the budget and the reduction in revenues, and I think certainly some of the atmosphere and the attitude at that time contributed to the union's decision to really hold the city's nose to the grindstone on the print in that side letter.
All right. I think we've been able to beat this horse for the last few years as intensely as I intend to allow it to be beat, so I think it's time for us to go ahead and call this matter. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Item 12.
So move.
Move by Levy, second by Spritzer. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.